Hello, Supervisors in the Nicolay area and the business administrators from the other Nicolay area school districts. I have sat in on the transportation addendum discussions. Our meeting, the Glendale River Hills School District. Relationship with our fellow Nicolay school districts is such that we work together on a transportation program. And we're bringing to you the addendum for the contract. And I'm going to be calling on Mike Weaver, just to give a little background. All four of the districts this week are bringing the approval of this addendum to their school boards for approval. The business managers have worked hard with Right Way, Go Right Way, negotiating this addendum for this year. And I will say there are two, besides finishing this addendum. I'm very interested in what this addendum will do to help us negotiate a contract for the future. And keeping in mind that we, I hope at some point during this year. We will be needing the transportation services, bringing kids to Hartway and Glen Hills face to face before this year is over. And that we will need the cooperation and the partnership with Go Right Way. Mr. Weaver, may I, as President Franklin, with your approval, may I call on Mr. Weaver to give some background, more details?
Absolutely.
Mike, go ahead.
He needs to be unmuted.
Let's see if I can do that.
Oh, he sounds so, he's just telling us all the information. Enlightening. Did he say he was gonna pay the transportation bill himself? I thought I heard. There we go.
There we are. That's, that's all I have. No, just kidding. So, Mr. President and the board, so this has been a work in progress since we approved the 2019-2020 addendum. We immediately began on the 2020-2021 addendum, so this is for one year. We are in a consortium, so we work with four districts. It also includes transportation of private schools. So we've been working, because districts are hybrid, some districts are virtual. Each district is unique, so each district had their own little area of which they request as far as an agreement to what they would pay. So for Glendale specifically, because you are in virtual, we are taking the 2019-2020 regular education transportation. So that does not include kindergarten or special education. And we take that dollar amount and we're agreeing to 55% of that amount. That 55% is what we boil down between the districts and Right Way to say, okay, what is take away profit? Take away workers, drivers that are not currently employed. What is the stay alive price, if you will, for success? And 55% is what we got down to. So that is what we are agreeing to. Unique to this is that if you were to come into a hybrid situation, we did agree to, we got to a bus rate plus route charge. Which is a good thing, because in our current contract, we have a triple run route. But we're not using triple run, so we were able to get to a base cost of a bus plus routes. As well as a kindergarten charge and then fuel just depends on usage. And special education is dependent on actual usage. And then the other unique part that I think is an important win for the districts is if we return, or I shouldn't say if. When we return to school, the old rates would fall off, if you will. And we start out with our new rates, whatever our actual rendered services would be for that moving forward. So we wouldn't go back to the 2019-2020 rates. So the real reason why we're using 2019-2020 is we just don't know what the usage would be currently, because we're not in school. So it's the fair, most fair way we could start out with a negotiation.
So, Mr. President, I am recommending approval by the school board of the transportation addendum as presented to the board this evening. Mike, am I correct, Nicolay has approved of this addendum? How about the other two school districts? Where are they in the process?
Yep. So Nicolay has approved, Fox Point Bayside approved earlier this week. And it was in discussion two weeks ago with Mapledale Indian Hill. And it's up for approval tomorrow at their regular board meeting.
Thank you.
I suppose I have some questions, but before we do that, I'll ask if there's a motion.
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so I guess I want to start. I have a number of concerns. I just kind of want to lay them out. And walk through this and maybe we can go through them point by point. But the first thing is this agreement would be through the rest of the current school year. In terms of the payment, instead of creating a timeframe, we're chunking it into perhaps semesters. So that we'd agree to a payment and then revisit it for second semester. So that for the first six months of the year, we'd relax and for the last six months, we revisit it. The next question I have is about the cost, twofold. You said 55% is kind of the, I forget the phrase that you used, but you know, it's kind of down to the bone. But I'm not sure that 55%, I don't understand 55% and what entails. But I also, you know, it looks like it's the basis of 2019-2020 pre-pandemic costs. And I think there have been some changes. So I have some questions about that. There were firm numbers that were in the addendum that we had the last time around, so that we knew exactly how much we were paying. And I didn't see that in this version of the agreement as well. If we go to hybrid, you know, so it looks like 55% figure is what we would pay, whatever the 55% is. Right now being virtual, which means that only busing special ed students on a perny basis, we'd be paying 55% of what our price would normally be estimated. 55% sending really very few people to school by bus. But if I read it right, it says that we would pay 100% if we go to a hybrid approach. I'm not sure that we want to do that. Previously, in the addendum from last fall, there was an obligation to seek offsets from CARES funding in good faith by Right Way. I don't see an audit requirement. And then I guess just generally, you know, in a COVID environment, there's going to be less ridership. We have an enrollment decline this year. I mean, we're estimating costs, but I don't know what any of these numbers are. And I have a hard time agreeing to do that for, you know, payment per year. So I'm not trying to spew all this out, but I guess I'm concerned about what this is going to cost us. And where the hard numbers are and what the actual costs are as a starting point to Right Way for running the buses in our district.
Okay, so I'll try to break it down on the questions that I heard and hopefully I catch them all.
I can walk through it too, and I'm sorry to throw it all out there, but it's a lot of points.
Yep. So the way we structured the addendum was so that if we're in virtual, if we're in hybrid, or if we're fully back in person. We know exactly what's in front of us. So currently in virtual, we know that your cost in the addendum is $1,803.71 per day for non-use. If you were to be utilizing.
I'm sorry, could you, and I apologize. What is that dollar amount? And what does that represent? What does that, 1,800 represent?
That's your 55% of the pre-pandemic daily rate, which was $3,279.47. Did you, sorry, did you guys get the addendum?
Yeah, and I looked through that. And you know, there are some dollar amounts referenced in there. But you know, when we did this last time, we estimated what the percentage was. And then we had a dollar amount. They think that the dollar amount is what we agreed to pay. And so now it's phrased as a percent. So that's what I'm trying to understand.
Now I understand you. Yeah, so what you're looking for, like last year, we knew there was 55 school days in which we did not transport. So we were able to calculate the actual invoice and pay that in one lump sum, if you will, at the end of the year. We just don't know how long this is going to go. So again, we have what the daily amount will be. But as far as how many days, it's, will just be invoiced each month, depending on what's happening inside of that month.
Okay, what is the cost? Let me just jump ahead. What is the cost to the bus company right now, today? What is their cost? I understand 55% of our cost based on 2019-2020. What is the bus company's current cost of maintaining a fleet without running it?
I can ask Right Way. I don't know if they'll actually give me that number. But it, again, I can ask them. Their response will include their lease of land, lease of buses, maintenance, mechanics. As well as their administration and their routing, Latonya. So you know, there's pieces in place that are still operating, even when there aren't students riding those buses.
No, and by the way, you know, Right Way's been a partner. They've worked with us and we've worked with them. And we certainly would prefer it to make everything work. But you know, I look at this from two different sides, you know, from negotiation. One is, you know, are we saving money? Well, we're saving money from what we did pay. But you know, we're paying more than, unless I know differently, we're paying more than what their costs are. And so you know, we say we're eliminating profit, but you know, are we? When there have been layoffs and you know, there may be skeleton crew and so forth. I just want to know what their current costs are, at least, you know, a starting point. Because I'm not sure that it's valid to say that we ought to be paying 55% of pre-pandemic costs. When we're in the pandemic, when you know, we've got 85 or 87, 85 or 87 less students overall. You know, there's just a lot of factors that go into there. So we're starting at this really high point, right? When their actual cost might be less, so they might be doing this. And then those other protections are in that document.
Right. We didn't know what the actual ridership would be. I mean, speaking from experience on Mapledale, ridership is down. So in the hybrid situation, we're not routing as many kids. But we're still in the hybrid agreement while we're paying 100% of the rendered costs. We're paying 55% of difference from last year, because we don't know how many kids would or would not take the bus if had the option.
I have a question, President Franklin.
Please.
And I apologize if you've answered this already. This 55%, is this the total of all of our, of all the schools? And it's 55% of the budget, or is it 55% of Glen Hills budget?
The 55% within the contract is 55% of usage based on our consortium.
Consortium.
Correct.
So, and then I have.
55%, I apologize, Tamika, 55% of what you paid last year as your portion of the consortium.
Because this is where I have an issue with a little bit. Not so much what Andy's saying is, we are, as a school district, bare minimum. The other two school districts have had some kind of hybrid, some kind of bussing, even though it's lower. I think we have had zero to hardly any, if, except for the cases that, you know, that we had to either bus somebody out to a school that they, that they, you know, open enrollment or whatever the case may be. But I have, I'm a little bit hesitant to, again, I guess I'm really just sick and tired of Glendale being the burden. You know, carrying the burden for other districts and seeming like it's fair when we're not using the buses at all. I mean, or very little, but we're still getting ready to pay 55%. Now, we did that last spring, and I get it, you know, because this was weird and it was just. But if we all were doing hybrid, I get us splitting up this, but we're not. We're virtual. And I know this is a consortium, and so maybe you can explain this. But I really don't want our, when we're not using it at all, but we're kind of helping them in the sense. It wouldn't happen if it was the other way around. And I'm just sorry, we have to watch our money.
So can I piggyback a little bit? Because where I'm confused is in the hybrid agreement in the contract. What I'm reading it, what I'm reading is if we were in hybrid, we would pay for actual services we're receiving on top of 55%. Am I reading that right?
The way it works is we would do, you pay for 100% of what you render. And then the difference between prior year daily rate and what you're paying for the daily rate currently, you would pay 55% of the difference. So you're paying.
Paying what it takes to get to the 55% if we're not doing it through actual services?
Yep, correct.
Okay, so you're not paying, okay.
And part of it is, the hard part is we have to provide transportation by law. So part of the concerns here is that if, again, we don't know what the future holds. But if we're back in full in-person or any kind of modification in-person, we have to provide transportation. So part of this is having the ability to route students as soon as we know we're going into that mode. Or having the ability to get students to school so that they can not lack that access to education. So it's partly to pay for, hey, are you guys ready to get rolling? Because we need to get back into school.
Well, there's two things that rock and roll, and I get. But according to our policy, we would be at least two weeks in front of kids coming in, if I'm not mistaken with our policy. So you'd have two weeks, so it wouldn't have to be rock and roll in the next day. But I still don't, and please bear with me, I'm a little slow. But I still don't quite understand why we are paying 55% when we're not using the services. And I understand that we're in a consortium, but I still.
From my perspective, I mean, I certainly respect the need. Look, Right Way's been around, they've been on this, we've been part of the consortium. And there's certainly a good faith aspect to maintaining some commitment for the purpose of ensuring that our ability to use Right Way going forward is, you know, protected. But I don't see any assurances in the contract that give us any kind of leverage, you know, to do that. There's no auditing, there's, you know, no, you know, we aren't lengthening the term of the contract. All we're doing is agreeing for a one-year period of term to pay a certain percent of expenses that, for all we know, without having visibility on what costs are, that frankly, we're paying for. And so I have no problem in theory agreeing to a shorter period of time or giving a specific stipend to the company. So that we can at least negotiate, at least act in good faith. But we did that, by the way, you know, in spring as well. So it's just that without any hard numbers to go by, it's, I don't want to say it's reckless. And I don't want to say it's irresponsible, but it does make everyone question what it is that we're paying for. So I just want to know, like you say, what it is we're paying for and then be able to make that decision. We've committed at the school district in the past to supporting all those institutions that provide services to us. And to making sure that we don't have layoffs and everything else. So you know, I'm not hostile to the idea of negotiating something in these extraordinary circumstances. But it's got to be two ways. We have to understand what their numbers are.
Last, weren't we able, I don't know if it was you or Rosie that actually went in and did like a, some kind of audit? Was it you that did the audit for them? And you came back and you kind of rest assured us that this is what they needed to do. I am, I would like you to do that again, if possible. Because I personally cannot vote for this if I don't know. If you come back and say, you know what, Tamika, I think this is reasonable. I think, you know, I looked at their books or, you know, we did what we did last year, at the end of last year. And I find this fair. I don't have a problem, but no one's done that. And that's where I'm concerned. And I trust your judgment in this sense, but I still want you to go check it out.
And I'm not sure what has been shared by Dr. Moser. I mean, part of, while yes, we are working on 2020-2021. Part of this is to get us to a potential extension and/or potential RFP, depending on which way this goes. So you know, the ultimate goal is to create or gain efficiencies in the system so that we can continue our partnership. But to do that, we have to, you know, we have to get through where we're currently at, and then we have to start focusing on future years.
I have one other quick question in regards to that. Are they the only game in town? Because it seems like they're setting themselves up for a good negotiation. And we are so nervous about possibly not finding that, that we are giving them whatever they want. I'm not saying that that might be the case, that they're the only game in town and we really need to use them or, but I.
President Franklin, just, we are not giving them everything they want. Let's make sure that is said in this negotiation. This is not a case that they're, that we're just rolling over. There was good negotiations that took place between the business managers and Right Way. And as I said on my opening comments, part of this discussion for me is what Mr. Weaver identified is what we're going to be doing in the future is extremely, is extremely important to me. A board member, Seem, had her hand up, President Franklin.
Please.
Three things. Jeff Preefer at Nicolay went through this process with us for those purposes. But he also brought some historical perspective in that when he was at Brown Deer. They kind of went through the process of, you know, kind of the sentiments being expressed tonight. That, you know, are they the only game in town? Should we be doing an RFP? And unfortunately, it didn't end well for Brown Deer. They ended up going to RFP, choosing another transportation agency. And that didn't work out for them, because that transportation agency didn't provide as good a service as Right Way, unfortunately. And when they went back to Right Way, they end up paying more than they did under the prior contract. Keep in mind too, that we paid this last spring or over the summer, when nobody was getting any services either. Understandable that we're not, we're not receiving services now. But you know, I don't want to end up being the odd man out, so to speak. When it comes back to getting transportation at a later date, under whatever agreement is undertaken by the consortium.
I understand your point, and obviously in negotiating, you know, leverage is certainly a part of it. But I'm also not advocating, you know, saying no. I'm advocating understanding what our numbers are. I'm not saying anything other than let's understand what our position is. So for example, we were just asking about what the cost was, okay? Cost is one way of looking at it. Another question, and maybe you know the answer to this, I don't know the answer to it right now. But what is our current ridership? And what is, you know, and if we looked at our current ridership, let's say 10% of what it was, which may be high. But if we use that as a factor, is 10% of ridership? Is that number of ridership that we have today, how much would that be compared to the 55%? In other words, under this 55% idea, would we be paying more than what we would be paying? You know, we were in 2019 and we had 10% ridership, right? I mean, what is the actual cost and what's the actual ridership right now?
Well, one thing I want to add, number one, they're a private company. And number two, we didn't get all this information when we were paying full price under the transportation agreement. Speaking, I'm still speaking, one moment. Obviously, we're required to pick everybody up from house to house. And if somebody lives at point A and we have to get them to point Z, even if there's one person at point A. For the greatest amount of time, I mean, you still have one driver, you still have one bus, and you still have all the fuel it takes to get from point A to point Z. Even if you have one out of 10 person at 10% ridership. Granted, there's probably a little bit less time going from point A to point Z, because you only have one person to pick up. But I'm not sure, looking at it from a ridership perspective, is appropriate for this kind of contract, because. Pardon me?
It's another data point, though, because we can say, look, if we have, for example, what are we paying right now to get our needs met? Obviously, that's different, but gives us an idea. But you know, it gives us another idea to measure things against, right? I agree with you that we should be looking at what those costs are and how they get stacked up. But on the other hand, you know, we also ought to be looking at what the ridership is. And also maybe to the extent of what's going on Fox Point Bayside and Mapledale, you know, what's their ridership right now? Are they paying more than they would have by paying, you know, 100% of those services?
They're doing the 55%. That's sort of what's been agreed upon for everybody, if I'm understanding the hybrid situation. But I would just, I guess I would just.
But I said in the agreement.
If we were to not sign this, I would like to think about the impact of that. Because then would we be pulling out of this consortium? Would we then be responsible for busing on our own? What are those implications? So I guess I'm curious sort of what, if we really even have some room to negotiate here. And what I'm hearing from Mr. Weaver and Dr. Moser is that, that I think that they would recommend this. At least Dr. Moser would recommend this agreement, that work has gone into this. And they're saying that it has been, you know, sort of thoroughly negotiated. And I also heard Mr. Weaver say that Right Way's position is 55% is their bare bones. This is what keeps them going. And they did once offer to allow us to look at their books. I'm not sure that would be a problem, but I'm not inclined to hold up approving this agreement if it proves to be more detrimental to our district, if all the other districts are going forward with this. So that's.
So I have a question here. So, and I'm just going to be devil's advocate here. Tomorrow, you said, who's having their meeting tomorrow?
Mapledale Indian Hill.
Mapledale Indian Hill comes back and says, no, we're not doing this, when everybody else did it. Why do we always, we need to do what's best for us? And I understand, I'm just asking some questions. I'm not saying yes or no, but I just want some answers. And if he can come back and say, Tamika, because who do we have to answer to? The constituents. And if we sit there and keep doing this, and I am one of those people who usually just go with the flow. But, and I didn't have an issue with this last year in paying the 55, because we got most of the service that we got for the whole year. And this pandemic happened. Now, I think there, I want to make sure that they're not saying this is their bare minimum. But they've, their bare minimum is like 40%, but they know we'll pay, so they're going to add some on. I just want to make sure the numbers are right. Can you, I guess, Mike, this is what I'm going to say. I will vote for this if you say that you know that this is their bare minimum. And you believe that this is their bare minimum and they're not profiting off of us by doing this. I will trust your judgment. We have to trust the experts. So I'll trust your judgment with my questions in mind.
I can say when we started negotiations, we were above 55%. So we did, we started at, I think it was 65%. We backed it down to 55%. They wanted to do a couple, they wanted the first 10 days, whatever the case may be, we got them down to 55%. When we look at other districts around the area, there are other districts that pay anywhere between 65 to 75%. of their pre-regular rates. So we know that we are below what most districts are paying. I, I will be frank, my concern is that our contract, future contract, whatever it may be, is going to include some kind of non-school day percentage. And that's kind of what we're angling to is what, what can we, what can we negotiate down to to ensure that future contracts, we can get a rate that we're acceptable, that we feel acceptable.
All right, I'm gonna, I guess what I'm gonna do is, is trust you on this. I mean, I, I I always state that we should trust the experts. I, I have the questions. But if you say that, you know, you've done your due diligence, I'm going to, you know, side with you and this and Dr. Moser. Just know that I have those questions. And if it comes out I'm right, I'm gonna say, I told you so, so.
I'm sure you will.
Someone like you, Tamika.
President Franklin, may I?
Please.
Okay, going back to Danielle's questions, questions or, or comments. I do recommend that the board opt approval of the motion that is on the floor, the motion in second that's on the floor. I am, I'm happy to provide answers to questions that have been raised tonight, but I do not think that the questions that have been raised should inhibit a yes vote on the motion. I think the questions, I, I, I think President Franklin made the statement he wants answers. He should get those answers. But I, I think the, the approval of the, of the addendum has been done with good faith bargaining. And I, I think both sides have engaged in good faith bargaining. I I, I feel there's been hard work on this. And I, I do want to remain a part of the consortium. At least, I want to stay a part of the consortium. In fact, I'll, I'll say this. This addendum was put in, in, before you with the, with the intent to keep the consortium intact. That we want to continue working with our neighbors and so I don't, Danielle, did I answer your questions?
Yeah, yes, thank you. I mean.
And so my, I, I continue to encourage a yes vote. And I will be happy to provide information. But I don't think that information should inhibit a yes vote on this particular motion.
Okay. But let me ask one last question and then I'm done. What's the harm in asking them to give us more costing data?
Can I interject for a second, please? I, I just want to, you know, I've taken a backseat while everyone has talked and, and I just want to say that I fully believe that Dr. Moser and the other superintendents and the business managers in this consortium fully vetted this decision. They are the experts in this, and I think they are asking the questions and have asked the questions that we are all looking for. And I am not going to sit here and think that I'm an expert on anything. And I would like to think that Dr. Moser is, is spot on in his asking us to, or, or I would say urging us recommending that we say yes. I mean, we, we're talking in circles about getting answers to questions, and they are the experts. And I don't believe for a second that Mr. Weaver or Dr. Moser would put our district in a position that would financially hurt us.
You know, I, I agree with that and I endorse it and, and you focused on that very well. Let me ask one question because I think we skipped over this time, and I think this might kind of direct us where we need to go again, which is what is the expected savings from our annual payment to RightWay that we would expect to get if we continue on this on this addendum today? What do we expect to save?
Well, I have not seen the actual current bills for Glen Dale, but taking special education out, you would see a 45% savings. I mean, in theory, if you're not using regular routing, you would see 45% of the budgeted amount returned or not used.
So the bottom line is, we're still saving from starting point, 45% of what we were saving, which is a point that you made in the beginning that we talked about, that's inherent in the 55% figure. But probably needs a little bit of attention again as we wrap up. All right. Then I'd know for the question, but I think I saw a hand from Shannon Kilton. And so, Dr. Moser, would it be all right if we just allow her to chime in here?
Certainly, yes, certainly.
Thanks, Mr. Franklin. I just have a few of the answers, and I just wanted to make sure I could clarify this, and I can work with Mr. Weaver on this. We currently, and I would like to thank my administrative assistant, Caleb Bruschowski, because she is a real taskmaster with the details, but we're currently busing 40 students. Students in special education, 26 of them from Glen Hills, 14 at Parkway. And because of the pandemic and because we want to have our buses not having lots of children, there are six different routes going to Glen Hills and three different routes going to Parkway to manage those numbers. So they're coming and going so that the students in those buses are distanced and safe and also scheduled in staggered ways so that there's not too many of them in a classroom at the same time. So we are currently using the busway, RightWay Bus Company for students. So I just wanted to clarify that.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right. Then I guess the only thing is, our policies allow us, and I see a hand up, but not formal visitor participation. Dr. Moser, would it be out of order to take a question from?
There, I would like to call the question.
Well, I was actually about to call on Rob Cronwell, who has his hand raised.
I called a question. Please take a vote on taking the vote.
Okay, I'll take a vote on taking a vote. All in paper, taking a vote. Tamika Bukovic?
Yes, I.
Molly Krytojak?
Hi.
Okay, Danielle Bailey?
I, I would like to allow Rob to, if he has a question or comment on this, I'll say no, but then I would like to take the vote.
Teresa?
Hi.
Okay, and I don't know, the motion carries three to two. So in that case, we will move directly to vote on the recommendation. So on the recommendation to accept the addendum as negotiated, I will go from left to right across my screen. Molly Krytojak?
Hi.
Teresa Seem?
Hi.
Danielle Bailey?
Hi.
Tamika Bukovic?
Hi.
And Andrew Franklin, I also vote aye.
Thank you, President Franklin and the board members.
The motion carries, yeah.
If Rob's comment was about that, is it, is it no longer?
Well, it's not on the agenda anymore, but he can, and we've already acted, so, but I, I would still call Rob. Rob, obviously, it's under the, the bridge, but if you have a quick comment.
Well, I was just gonna say, if you have questions about the contract and the terms, the only time to address it is before you vote to approve it. Because now if you find out that really 50% is closer to the break even point, well, it's too late. You've already approved it, so it doesn't matter. And there's nothing wrong with asking questions. While I appreciate the fact that people are saying, well, it's been negotiated in, in good faith. I gotta say, our new interim business director's only been working for us for a few weeks. I don't know how much time he's had to to dig into this contract.
I, I'm just gonna interject here. He's done an exemplary job and he's also.
I'm just saying, he's only been on it for a few weeks and he was only gonna be working limited hours, so.
He's part of Mapledale Indian Hill, so he does know what went into the contract.
Yeah, I, Rob, I appreciate your concern about that, and, and your points are well taken. They reflect the discussion that we had. I certainly wouldn't have felt right to not allow you an opportunity to speak, but.
Move on those Roberts rules there, I gotta tell you.
I appreciate your comments and you're welcome. All right, moving along to our next item then. I believe that we are on to this item to see approval of the foundation grant.
President Franklin, I believe, Carla, are you here? There you are. You need to mute.
I'm muted.
President Franklin, may we call on Carla to make.
She's not muted.
Oh, can I, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
There we go.
Could we call upon Carla to make a presentation from the, from the foundation?
My husband has a fancy mic. It's like something from the 50s. I have to push a button on it. Hello, everyone. I hope to be extremely uncontroversial tonight. But if you'll humor me, we have this nice audience of parents, and it's a great chance to toot the foundation's horn. So for those of you who don't know, I'm the foundation president. I'm Carla Pennington Cross. A lot of parents like me for many years think the foundation is a really mysterious entity. It's not. It's organized as a private 501(c)(3) charitable entity, and it's run by unpaid trustees, not by the district. So we're a private organization, and trustee is just this really fancy word for volunteer. So we're like the PTO. We're primarily parent and teacher volunteers. But unlike the PTO, our primary purpose is to raise money to put into the school district. And we've done that in a lot of big and little ways over many, many years, years that predate me by a long shot, with small grants to teachers and staff, with our tribute program, which allows people who want to give teachers gifts to give them as a charitable donation through the foundation, so you can get whatever tax benefits you want. And then the teachers get to use that money to fill their district teaching needs. We funded a bunch of larger inference, infrastructure projects, many of which are before my time I didn't even know about. Refinishing the Parkway gym floor. We funded a bunch of improvements in one of the libraries, funded a bunch of technology upgrades, and most recently, and what I'm really proud of, because I was involved in it, is that between the PTO and the foundation, we raised more than $120,000 in about a three-year period to help fund the new all-abilities-inclusive playground at, at Parkway. So I like to think the foundation has made some big differences in our schools. And in addition to donating money, we've also been building an endowment, which is currently valued at about $250,000. So a lot of work is going into all of that. Three years ago or so, we committed to raising $50,000 for the new innovative learning lab that's going in at Glen Hills, and we anticipated finishing that funding this past spring, but of course, the pandemic intervened. And our main fundraising events, the Spring Gala and the Run Walk in the fall, we had to cancel. So we've really been struggling with how to move forward. So this fall, our trustees, the volunteers, we had this really frank and wonderful discussions about what our values and goals are. We all agreed we need to do as much as we can right now, when so many people are struggling. And we agreed that if there was ever a rainy day, this is it. So we decided to dip a little bit into that endowment fund to complete our funding promise for the Innovative Learning Lab and to step forward with assisting our school district. So with that small withdrawal, we're gonna be able to keep our promise of $50,000. And we've also earmarked $15,000 for new grants, and that's with a goal of prioritizing grants to fill unique, create, unique needs created by this pandemic crisis. So we're almost done setting up that grant process, and we hope to be accepting applications really soon. I want to say, my vision for our foundation activities and really for our whole community is captured in four words. I'm getting a little jingoistic here, but I think about it all the time. It's really simple. Live together, give together. And it's what we already do as a school district, and I hope to celebrate and build on it. The fact that we even have a rainy day fund is a testament to the work of several generations of foundation volunteers. The money we raise comes from families, caregivers, teachers and staff, scout organizations, students, school board members, local small businesses. We collect it in little bites, and it adds up. And it just makes me so proud of how generous our community is. So, you know, for our foundation in this crazy year, we're working really hard on some new projects. I want to highlight two for you, for my board members. One, we're creating a new webpage. We hope it'll serve as a solid portal to information, not just about the foundation, but also about our community. We're gonna have a microblog on it, and we may ask to highlight one or more of you. If you would allow someone to interview you, have a little 150 to 200 word piece about, say, Tamika or Danielle to share with our communities who you are, so they know you're not just these scary people in board meetings. We're developing something I'm really excited about, a business directory in which caregivers and staff in our district community can choose to list their businesses, their jobs, their talents and skills, what they can offer. And we hope this resource is something that can be used by our district communities, by our district families, to fill services and products that they need. Sort of building our own micro-community, really excited about that. And we hope to use these new platforms to celebrate our strengths and improve our fundraising ability and all that. We trustees are unanimous in our commitment to building community. We want every single child in our district to have the best opportunity to succeed, grow and thrive. I'm really humbled to be working along such a wonderful group of people. I'm humbled that you all sit here and listen to me, meeting after meeting. I'm very proud to be able to ask you to please approve our offer to give you $50,000 to use in finishing up the innovative learning lab. Say yes.
Dr. Moser, do you have anything to add to that lovely introduction to the recommendation?
I don't want to do anything to ruin that.
Neither do I. I, I'll just take the check, but I suppose we have to go through the process of a motion.
So controversial.
Their motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second, Teresa.
I just want to say that the work that you're doing represents the best of what our community is.
I agree. It's, it's a tearjerker. I just, it's amazing, you know, we are, who is this, a thousand points of light? You know, I don't know. It always drove me crazy, but that's kind of what our community is. We're just wonderful. We're amazing. We're gonna be starting also a subscription model for fundraising, but because we realize often people feel like unless you have a huge chunk of money, you can't make a difference, and it's just not true. We can all give in little pieces and, and, you know, build our own little castle here together.
That's great. Does anyone else have anything to add?
I just appreciate the positive positivity. Thank you, Carla.
You're welcome.
Absolutely. All right. I'm sorry, go ahead.
FYI, a thousand points of light, I believe was Bush Senior.
It was.
Just a little tidbit.
All right, and anyone else? If not, I will do a roll vote from left to right across my screen. Danielle Bailey?
Aye.
Teresa Seem?
Aye.
And Tamika Bukovic?
Aye.
Molly Krytojak?
Hi, thank you very much.
And Andrew Franklin and the motion carries. Thank you, really, thank you very much.
I will drop the check off tomorrow. Seriously, I will. Thank you, everyone.
All right. Then moving along, I guess we're on to discussion items, number 3A. Which is reopening updates and data reports from North Shore Health Department.
President Franklin, could I call on Dr. Kilton, Dr. Shannon Kilton to give that report?
Yes, please.
Great. So in the interest of time, I was going to just say, turn on the TV. Next item?
That's about right.
Right. I'm always hoping for something good to share, but we'll keep moving forward, so. All right. Here we go. Just a reminder, the data presented is based on four metrics, based on the North Shore Health Department, the burden, COVID cases, the percent positivity, and the hospital in crisis care.
metrics based on the North Shore Health Department, the burden, COVID cases, the percent positivity and the hospital in crisis care. And the report tonight is directly coming from the North Shore Health Department's report from Friday, November 13th. And I kind of was joking about the whole TV watching, but for those of us that are watching the news as much as I am, I would just like to commend our school board and our community and our staff for the decision that we made back in July to start the school year in the virtual plus phase two format. Because as we watch all the other school districts go in and out, in and out, opening and closing, et cetera, it's been great to for consistency for our students and staff and community to, to have started the year virtually. So shout out to Glendale. So good job. Unfortunately, our burden, which continues to grow, is now at 1,522 per 100,000 in the cases. Again, that's in the critical state. I'm going to keep going through these quickly. The data this time, the North Shore Health Department shared that they have some inaccuracies in their data due to miscoding in addresses by the Department of Health Services. So they're not sticking 100% by, behind every single data point here, but it's probably pretty similar. I, for tonight's presentation, I looked at all of our North Shore partners, Shorewood, Brown Deer, Whitefish Bay, Mapledale, Indian Hill, the Nicolay data, and it's pretty consistent all around. So I've been talking about this, we, month after month, about wanting our curve to flatten. And you'll notice our red line here is finally flattening. It's not the place we wanted to flatten. We'd like it to flatten down here, but at least it's not looking at quite the angle that it was in the past. The past week, we've had 105 new cases in the Glendale community. Our percent positivity, again, the, the rate line up there is flattening, but it's still flattening way too high. So our percent positivity over the 14 days is 33.8%. And again, we're still looking for that to be at 5%. If you've been watching the news, you'll notice they keep talking about hospital and the care is definitely becoming concerning. We're still listed in the green in this area, but it's becoming concerning. The other piece on this website, if you navigate the Milwaukee COVID dashboard, if you click on the buttons on the bottom here where it says percentage and total, you can also get those to come into a percentage. So when you click on the ventilators in use, this is the visual it gives you and it shows our, the capacity is way up here for ventilator usage. But what does that really look like numerically? It's 32% of ventilators are in use. 90% of the floor beds are currently used and 78% of ICU beds are currently in use. I'm in Milwaukee County, that is. Again, this is just the criteria again. I'm just going to keep skipping this because we're clearly not close to even 5 to 10% positivity rate to move forward. The thing that North Shore Health Department has done lately, and I shared this last board meeting, is instead of just having the overall burden rate, which I said, I think it was 1,522 off the top, they now break it down into age groups. So they show you children under the age of five. There are 17 confirmed cumulative cases, which is 3% of the cases. Then they look at the new cases from 1030 to 1112 and figure out the increase and then do that same burden formula to figure out whether we are in critical or high. So again, are now our younger children are now in the critical state, whereas last time we were listed in the high. Here's our summary chart again. Eventually, I'm going to run out of space for this chart, but we continue to be in the critical state with cases and percent positivity. Each time I bring up this data for the Glendale group, I, I like to have us reiterate and think about our care and compassion and empathy for those people that are listed as these numbers because I'm just reporting numbers here, but these numbers are actually human beings that are navigating through COVID. I think when the pandemic started ages ago and we started doing these reports, many of us could have said we didn't really know anyone that was positive or a family member that was positive. And now I would say, from talking to people around me, most of us have a close contact or a family member or a close friend or colleague that has suffered the effects of COVID, either having the case affect me personally or a family member. So I think it's important that we just continue to remember that COVID affects people and these are actually people and that we need to, to love each other and be compassionate and care about one another during this pandemic. So right now in Glendale, we have one active staff case. We have zero active student cases, zero students on quarantine and seven staff members on quarantine.
So Shannon, just to understand that, are the seven quarantining related to the active staff case or are they external? Do you know how many are?
I do. One of the seven quarantines is related to the active staff case. The other six are contacts from at home or in the community, not school-based.
And do we understand the nature of the close contact for the staff, the two staff members?
Yes, we do. Unfortunately, because I, because our district is small, I, if I explain that scenario, that would allow you to, people or people in those buildings to be able to identify who those people are and I don't feel right.
No, I understand that completely. I guess my general question, this may not be for you. This may just be for something I have been thinking about is I would like to better understand the safety protocols that we have in place, what's sort of what's happening for teachers and staff and faculty. And sort of just, just continue to have a deeper sort of conversation understanding. I don't know if that's best happening in our committees or offline, but, or you know, or in public, but I just, yeah, I, I think that's sort of more the heart of what I want to, you know, get at is what are we doing? What can we do more of? What can we do better? You know, where we, you know, what are we doing right? That kind of thing.
Correct. I think, I'm not sure if you read my last staff newsletter, which was all the COVID stuff that I sent out with, you know, guidelines, the handbook. Yeah, trying not to meet. Yeah. So like our goal should always be to try not to be in close contact with one another, but as I said earlier, we're, we're human beings and even some of us that have been in close contact and have not contracted, some of us that have tested positive still can't even trace it back to where they would have gotten it. And I just think that sometimes it is what it is and we just, you know, need to do the best and be diligent and continue. I think on the news today, they said, you know, you're the three W's, you know, wear the mask, you know, stay clear and work, you know, on staying distant, you know, stay, stay away from one another and then wash your hands. And if we just continue to can work on that and do the best that we can. But I know that's not the answer you want, but.
I mean, I, I get it. I know. I, I understand that it is closer to, I think, I agree with you, to all of us and I, a lot of us want answers when it gets closer and they're not always there, but I still, I'm just thinking about the comment from our last meeting from a staff member, you know, just talking about the fact that it is so pervasive right now. I just want us to sort of constantly be asking, are we doing enough? Could we do more? Just to keep our staff and faculty safe and, and make sure that we're having that discussion.
I agree. Wear a mask, watch our distance and wash your hands. That's, we're going to just keep preaching that, I guess, for now.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Shannon. Appreciate it.
So there's, this is a new slide that I'm adding this week about additional staff information. So in our handbook, this is language right from the staff addendum. There, there are other reasons that we have staff members that are not in the building and these are, this is language right from the handbook. So if a staff member has been advised by a healthcare provider to quarantine and not be in public due to health risks, they have exemptions and have some accommodations that are made. If someone on our staff is caring for an individual who is under a quarantine order or recommendation, or if they're caring for a child under 18 whose school or daycare provider is closed due to, you know, coronavirus precautions or whatnot, all of these different criteria would apply to our staff per the handbook. So I thought I would share this data as well. So currently in the district, we have six staff members that have recommendations from their healthcare provider that working from home during COVID is in their best interest. Those six staff members are able to conduct business just like people that are working from in the buildings and they're able to work from home per their healthcare provider recommendations. Currently, as, as mentioned in the last slide, we have three staff members with childcare-related reasons for working from home and this is temporary. So for example, if your daycare shuts down or your child's classroom shuts down in a school district that's not in Glendale and you are able to work from home and still provide quality instruction to the class, students in your classroom, the handbook allows staff members to continue working, but also take care of their family during a closure. So we have currently three staff members in that area. We have five staff members that have ongoing childcare-related reasons for working from home on certain days per week. So for example, a, a certain staff member may have a conflict on every Thursday and may need to work from home and that has made accommodations with the building administrators and the, the previous superintendent for most of those that were approved. But again, the language in the handbook allows that decision to be made in the best interest of our staff as long as they're able to work from home. And then, and we still have now, we have-
I have a question on this one.
Yes.
Before you go on. Keep going, but before you go on, I just want to-
Yep, I won't, I won't. Go ahead. So, and then we also have two staff members that are currently on a leave of absence and that are not able to work due to COVID-related reasons. So that's just the additional data and if this is valuable for the district or for the board, I'm happy to continue to share this at each meeting.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Tamika.
I just had a quick question. So besides this 11, 12, 13, 15 people, everybody else is reporting, all the staff is reporting into the building?
Correct.
And is that included? Go ahead.
Does that include? Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I was going to say, and that's including administrative, administration and then like secretaries and is everybody following this?
Correct. So
Okay.
I will tell you the one piece of data, and I know I've mentioned this over the months here, that we, the language I've been using is in the abundance of caution. So in the abundance of caution, if a family member becomes in close contact to someone that tests positive, that's like two, you know, three people away from the, the staff member. We've been flexible while that staff member is allowed to work from home until that family member tests negative or whatever, but they're not required and we are just extra cautious because we seriously, we obviously don't want to spread the virus and we don't want to impact other staff members and students. So we do take cautionary measures where staff members are allowed to work from home for a day or two while they're waiting for a test result. And then when the test result comes back negative, and most often they have been, they come back to work and resume working from in the buildings.
Oh, that wasn't a, a judgment or anything. I just wanted to know how that was working, that if people were being able to come or having that flexibility if they get exposed, like the la, the latter part of your, your statement. I just wanted to know how that was working or.
Absolutely. So
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. And the other piece where I always have to remind myself about the fact that these are real human beings and people that we're talking about is we track this data and by we, I mean myself and the district office secretarial staff that work on this with paperwork that needs to be filed and the building level administrators, so that we are making sure we're not only reporting accurate data, but that we're supporting our staff that needs, you know, a little TLC to be any, you know, to make sure that we're taking care of their social, emotional needs. Because this is really tricky for, for many of us.
I, I just, I just want to say real quickly before you go on to the daycare updates that I, I, I find it reassuring that Dr. Moser and the rest of the administration offers that flexibility for teachers who, who need to work home in a crunch or I've, I've been in receipt of some emails where Dr. Moser says, this is a PD day, please work from home. I think that shows as a district, real empathy to our teachers and staff. And I know that they really appreciate it. So I just want to commend Dr. Moser and Shannon and the rest of the administrators for showing that flexibility and grace during this.
Awesome. Thank you.
Great.
At the last meeting, there was discussion and request that the daycare districts or the schools that are, we have daycare programs going. You know, what the protocols are, what their numbers were, et cetera. So this, as usual, after tonight, Karen will post this on the district website. These are links here to the milestone safety protocols, this link down here, and these are the links to the Glendale or Heights safety protocols. Reviewing them, they do have similar. You know, I think one of the questions last time is, are they required to, you know, wear masks, wash your hands? They're following the similar guidelines. They, both of these organizations work with the North Shore Health Department, like I indicated last meeting. But if any parent out there or any board member or staff member would like to look at their specific protocols, they will be linked on to the website sometime after the presentation is over. So.
My question is though, is that are they following at the bare minimum what our protocols are?
They, they have actually different protocols. For example, if you walk into Glendale Heights, even myself and Dr. Smith, who goes over there frequently, my temperature is taken when I walk in the door. Those are protocols that we as a district don't use. Those protocols haven't been recommended, but that's what Glendale Heights has chosen to do, that my temperature is taken when I walk into Glendale Heights. And then if I walk into a classroom, I have to take off my shoes and put on either, back in the day when I was wearing sandals, like slippers or something that they would give me that were disposable or not carry my shoes into the classroom as that's from the information that they've been given, that that's a safety protocol that works for their daycare. Now, I, every organization does have the right to do what they think is best for their organizations, but they're all very similar to what we're doing as a district. So I'm going to start with Glendale Heights. We currently have, and then let me just say that these numbers for the children, et cetera, like, don't hold me to the exact number. This is the numbers that I was given from each employee and the directors and the daycare. So according to Glendale Heights, they have 42 staff members that are currently employed at Glendale Heights. Four to five of those 42 are assigned to virtual learning in the school age program. So Glendale Heights has a school age program with virtual learning supports that we're providing and partnering with, but they also have little baby rooms, so one-year-olds and babies and two-year-olds, et cetera, that are obviously not in virtual learning. They have 182 total children enrolled right now at Glendale Heights. On average, 36 of those are school-aged children receiving virtual learning supports. Five, there are currently five Glendale River Hills employees helping with providing virtual learning services to our students at Glendale Heights. You'll notice this graphic is, is intentional and the reason it's in circles is these are pods. So our students in K4, there are six of them and one adult, that is one pod. They don't interact or go into the other rooms or cross paths other than, you know, socially distanced in a building with other groups. So for example, the K4 and K5 rooms never go together. And the purpose of that is obviously if this K5 class ends up with a positive case, we don't want to have to shut down the whole building. You just want to be able to quarantine a classroom. So they have these pods and this is, I'm only giving the school age report because obviously we're a school district that's educating students in K4 through eighth grade. So I'm just focusing on the school age report. These are the number of students in each of the classrooms and the number of adults in each of these classrooms. And again, these are our students receiving virtual learning supports as the parents of these students obviously need to work and they're not able to keep them at home during virtual learning. So right now, and this is as of today, I was talking to Cheryl Peters, who is the daycare director at Glendale Heights. I spoke with her tonight. Notice this is, this data is only for the school age group. They do have some active cases and quarantines in the baby rooms and in the younger, like the two-year-old classrooms. But those classrooms do not interact with our virtual learning classrooms. So right now, they have no active staff cases, no active students, no staff quarantining and no students quarantining in Glendale Heights. Today is a good day for this report, let's put it that way. And this could change tomorrow, as, as all of it can. Milestones, again, the, the safety protocols are linked into this right here. Milestones is obviously housed at Parkway Elementary School. And again, Dr. Smith's shout out because she facilitates running the partnership between Milestones, Glendale Heights, and our students. And I know that that's a lot of work, so I appreciate that. For, we have four Milestone staff. There are three teachers and one site manager that goes to Parkway to support the students. There are 21 children right now enrolled in the Milestones virtual learning supports. And three Glendale River Hills employees are helping support the students in the virtual learning there. These employees also work with students in Parkway, so they have a shared job. They also started pods and opened up another space inside of Parkway so that they could separate into three separate groups. The K4, K5 is combined for this one with eight students and two adults, first grade, seven students, two adults, and again, some older kids with two adults. And these groups are all separated now so that they have pods. And luckily today, the Milestones at Parkway has zero active cases. This was discussed at the last board meeting where they ended up having to shut down. But now everyone's back and everyone is in the clear. So again, this could change tomorrow, but this is the current data.
Question for you, if I can, just to, it just popped in. I'm looking at the data, you have five, we have five employees providing services to Glendale Heights, three working within Parkway and also Milestones. First off, as to the ones that are at Glendale Heights, are they only in Glendale Heights or do they do work also in the Glen, in Glen Hills?
Nope, they stay at Glendale Heights, that they are assigned to Glendale Heights during virtual learning and do not travel back and forth. The Milestones, three employees, because they're in Parkway already, will support in Milestones for some parts of their day and may support students that are in person for parts of the day.
Those are paraprofessionals, right?
Correct. We have no certified teachers working in either location. There, these are all paraprofessionals. I will say though, that our certified staff, other than right now, because our cases were so high. For example, Mr. Tilly was, as the school counselor, had been going over to Glendale Heights to, you know, meet with kids and provide supports. We're backing off that right now because we're trying to reduce the travel. But people have gone to Glendale Heights to provide, you know, in-person services, certified staff, but they're not assigned there. They were just going there for a small group or, you know, a reading lesson or some social emotional supports.
Okay, so I, I guess my question is, the, the staff that are there normally, if they weren't stationed in Milestones or Glendale Heights, what would they be doing during virtual learning? Do they be re-signed within the building?
Yes. I mean, if they weren't assigned to, to work with the students that were in person at Glendale Heights or Milestones, for example, I think, you know, Larry Smalley at another meeting basically said that one of the reasons we moved forward with this is to make sure that we weren't having to furlough any employees that didn't have necessarily work that they could work on when we are virtual. Right now, because we do have students in the building, we are able to provide the virtual learning to the daycares and provide the supports to the students in person in both buildings.
But these aren't special ed students, though, that are getting services?
They might be. There, I'd have to look at the list of kids. I know for, for sure there are students at Glendale Heights program that have students with IEPs that actually leave Glendale Heights and come to Glen Hills for some in-person services as well.
Okay.
I guess using the bus. So.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. So I just brought this summary page back up because I normally end these presentations with the slide, what does this mean now what? And this is my joke from the beginning, is we could have just turned on the TV and probably not had to listen to all this North Shore Health Department data. It means that we stay put, we're not ready to move forward to phase two or to phase three, I'm sorry. And that we stay put and keep hoping that the trends go down. Discussion questions, I know most of you have already asked questions. Here's the three W's I referred to, wash your hands, wear a mask and watch your distance. And then my last slide, so.
Okay, Teresa.
Do you have any information, Shannon, on whether and if and whether teachers will be designated as essential workers for the purposes of vaccine?
I have been watching that closely. That is a great question because I do think, you know, from what I've seen and read and heard, right now they're looking at healthcare providers and, you know, first responders. But I would, I would beg to say that our staff and our teachers are first responders in many ways and are essential workers. And I'm imagining the entire country would want our educators to be vaccinated so that we can get kids safely back in schools. But I have not seen anything on that yet.
Do you keep in contact with Ann Christensen? Is that a question you can ask her, point? And if she doesn't have any information, perhaps she knows who does or who we can?
Absolutely, I can reach out to her. She and I are in regular email contact.
Perfect, thank you.
You bet. Does anyone need any of the slides or I can stop sharing so people can see your faces?
I think that's all my questions. Does anyone else have any questions? At least let me say thank you. That's a lot of work that you always bring to us. It's a lot of updates. I know that we're asking for more information as we go. And, you know, just from my perspective, I'm glad that you're here to answer those questions.
I appreciate that. And I also thought it would be nice to hear a little bit more about how our in-person special education services have been going now that we've been in school for this long. Because we still continue to have, knock on wood, somebody, you know, pretty good data around the cases with students and the cases with staff working with those students. So that's a true testament to both building administrators by encouraging the safety protocols and making sure, and also our staff of, you know, doing their due diligence on all of the protocols that we've put into place. So. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Shannon.
Shannon. You bet.
All right. Then I guess we're going to move along from 3A to 3B. Discussion and reporting on selection of a superintendent and search firm.
President Franklin, I'd be happy to give an update unless you'd like to.
No, 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 be my guest, please.
Thank you. The school board met last Monday in a, a open session to discuss the selection of a superintendent, search firm. The board will be, will be meeting again next Monday. At that time, the board will discuss how many search firms they're going to interview. They will be ranking the search firms by name. Each board member will bring their list of firms ranked in order of preference. The board has identified that they would like to select a search firm by early to mid-December at the latest. They want to select a new superintendent by early to mid-March, but certainly not after April, not after April 1st. The board will be discussing on Monday such things as doing reference checks on the firms that are going to be interviewed. And the, the number again of firms to be interviewed will be decided by the board on this coming Monday, which is the, the 23rd. Board members, I, I think that gives the summary of where we, where we are. The board has homework to do in reading all the proposals. The board has all six proposals and they are to read them and, and, and do their ranking. So hopefully I've covered everything.
I think so. We welcome people to, to attend and to watch. We, you know, further on the process, of course. If I have nothing else, I guess unless anyone else does, we move on to 3C. Discussion informing district website working group.
Thank you, President Franklin. Jenica, are you somewhere? There you are, okay. Jenica, can you, and/or with members of your, your working group, tell us where you are on the district website revision project?
Sure. Are you okay if I, I jump in teammates?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Chair?
Sure. Do you want me to just share my screen? I can do that. And then we can just kind of talk through a little bit of it. Does that form good?
I don't know if you have, did he make you?
Who's? Can Karen make me a co-host?
Or can Shannon do it?
Oh, I'm co-host. Okay, perfect.
All right.
All right, so I'm sharing my screen now. Before I start, I just want to acknowledge, first, this working group kind of came out of the communication committee. So I just wanted to kind of frame how this all happened, a little background. And then I also, before we dig into this a little bit, I do want to acknowledge all the hard work. So there was a lot of people involved in creating our current website and updating our current website. So I just want to acknowledge the work that they've done. But we've had it for quite a few years now. And as a team from the communication committee, it was brought to the attention that we probably want to look at doing some updates based on our virtual world that we're living in and that that's going to be, you know, a key spot for us to gather information. So we wanted to kind of look at the needs that we have for it. So I had the opportunity to meet with the chair of the communication committee, Danielle Bailey. I apologize for my dogs. And member Teresa Seem. And I'm gonna probably have to hide somewhere. Once the car goes by, we're fine. So we determined our group charge. And really what we wanted to do was create recommendations for the district website. And just to make sure that we're fulfilling our end user satisfaction. And we want to provide a well-designed, accessible navigation system with current, fresh and informative content, ensuring like return usage of people. So that was kind of our goal. And you can kind of see that based on our discussion we had last night. Then our big focus right now is to really get some information from our user groups. So we really need to start some focus groups is what we determined we would want to do as a next step. And our goal is to gain a better understanding of the needs of all our user groups. So we wanted to schedule a meeting with families and really gather some information based on some strategic questioning. Also meet with staff members and really, you know, lean on their expertise and get a clear understanding of what they're looking for on the website, along with the business department administration. And then we also wanted to talk to students. How are they utilizing it? What are their needs for the website? And then we also wanted to look at the community, the school board, and just businesses in the area to kind of figure out what their needs as well would be. So that was our big focus for the next week. And our goal is to come back by December 7th as a working group and then have some conversations around what those needs were. And then we have to do some little reviews and determine whether or not we need to get more information. Did we get what we needed? And then we can move forward from there. I'm just gonna kind of scroll through this quickly. Please keep in mind that this is a draft, so we'll be making adjustments and changes as we work through this process. For the month of January, we had a couple of goals. Really wanting to review our website. Go ahead, if anybody wants to jump in on the team. We wanted to look at doing a Google Analytics. And what that is, is we can actually go into our website and we can run an analytics for a few weeks and see exactly what people are looking up. So we can kind of see what's being used on our website and what isn't. So that's really helpful information for us. And then also determining if we need to do an audit of our website. And then also thinking about accessibility. So do we really have accessibility for our website so that all, you know, people can utilize it? Do we have it as a phone app? Are we, you know, is it really accessible for all? And then also researching other websites. So there is a nice list of like the top 10 webs, educational websites in, in the United States. There's our partner districts as well that we would want to collaborate with. And then there's some really good checklist, lists and rubrics out there available that we could really dig into those websites and see what's really good about them. And then do some ratings on them and grading and determine what would be best for our district. And then following up with looking at all the data and all the research that we've gathered to come up with some recommendations of what our district, what our needs are for our user groups. And then what we would want and not want in a website. And then having that information would help us when we have some vendors possibly come out and kind of show us what they can and can't do for websites. And that would lead into recommendations that would go back to the communication committee. So that's kind of the draft of kind of where our heads were at with this. But our big, big step right now is really getting information from all those stakeholders as to what the needs are. So that was kind of what we talked through in our meeting. Danielle or Ms. Bailey or Ms. Seem?
Oh, you've cap, you've captured it very thoroughly.
Before the dog started barking.
You know,
Sorry, it was quick.
This is fantastic work that I see. You know, I, I, I know how we shine the light on communication and better ways to improve communication. And it's, it's not talk. This is real hard, you know, note to the grindstone work. And I see a very diligent approach. And I see you guys are asking the questions that you need to be asked. Frankly, I think it can only end well. And I just want to thank you and the committee for all the hard work that you're putting into this because I really think that it's going to pay off.
I think so. Well done. Thank you, Jenica.
So I, can I, I just have a quick question. I'm looking at the committee and I see, I see Karen on there. And I'm pretty sure that she runs the website now. And I know she wears a lot of different hats in the district. So will this add to her responsibilities in any way? Will she, will Karen still be responsible for the website? And if so, is she a pretty integral part of this process then?
I, I think who does what, I'm sure will have to be something eventually that will be determined based off of some of the information we glean from collaborating with some of our partner districts. And that would have to be something shared, I'm sure, and some conversations had around that. Because it's in surrounding districts, it, everyone does things a little differently, right? So what is the most efficient and effective way for us to get that communication out? Would have to be something that we would have to make some recommendations for, right? We don't, we can't act, we can recommend.
Yeah, and I would add, Molly, I, I'm, I would not want to add more to Karen's plate, but she'll have valuable input and information for us since she's doing so much with the website already. So that's sort of, that's the major role I would see for her is just, you know, being able to offer us that insight. But what we're seeing as sort of a major charge for the communications committee as a whole is really looking at the district's communication strategy. And like Jenica said, part of that is looking at roles and responsibilities for different avenues of communication, which I think till now has been not so diff- part of it is looking at roles and responsibilities for different avenues of communication, which I think till now has been not so defined. And so that's, I think that's part of the charge of our committee as a whole is to look at that and figure out how we can be efficient and make sure that, you know, that we clearly understand who's responsible for what and, and that they're being compensated and, you know, and all of that for what they're doing.
Alright, thanks for the clarification.
And, and Molly, she, she did volunteer, just so you know.
No, I wasn't told, volun, voluntold.
No, but she really volunteered.
Any other questions? I will also, just keep in mind, this is a draft, but I'll also share that Karen has this, so we, we can put this up if that's needed, okay?
And I, I'm sorry, I did, there was, I don't know if we addressed whether we'll be for the working group, the members. I was just, whether there'll be like parent members or family members or community members on that. And I think our working group at this point, we thought that we would host the focus group sessions and, and glean that information to kind of determine how much work is ahead for this group. And then assess whether growing the group larger needs to be, whether that's part of it. But I guess I would say if, if someone is very interested, you know, you could, we could reach out and see, you know. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Alright then, moving along, then our next item agenda is number three D, which is communication from the foundation.
I think Carla did that already.
Yeah, Carla, are you covered? If you're not, if you are.
Do you leave us a ring?
Nope.
Push the button on the microphone.
I don't see Carla on here.
This, I am good. You don't need to hear anything else from me. I'm good. And Tamika, thank you. Thank you for knowing what my idiocy was.
Wonderful.
Did I pay attention?
Totally.
Awesome. Alright, thank you very much. Dr. Moser, you want to do three?
Yes, thank you, President Franklin. We're at that time of the school year or just the, the calendar to announce that there will be a School Board election coming up in April. On April 6th will be the election. There needs to be a primary. It's February 16th. The deadline to file for the School Board is January 5th at 5 o'clock. And all the paperwork to file for the School Board can be picked up in the district office starting on December 1st, which is coming up soon. And you can pick it up between 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM, Monday through Friday. And we'll have this information on our, our website concerning the upcoming School Board election.
Dr. Moser, I would, this is just a suggestion that we do not have them pick them up at the office because our buildings are closed and they will have to download from the website. Our, our school website, maybe. If we are close to the public, that's still people coming in. Am I correct? Or am I incorrect? Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Hey, can I, I'm sorry, Dr. Moser, I'm gonna jump right in. This is Karen. I usually have packets and everything that I post an envelope on the door because this election during this timeframe usually runs over the Christmas holidays when we're not around. So I'm just going to be putting everything on the door in an envelope for the
Outside?
So we're all good.
Outside?
Yes, outside.
Oh, oh, okay. I didn't understand what you're talking about. Okay, thank you.
If, if there is someone, my recollection is that it's formed requiring notaries. So I assume that if someone doesn't have a notary, we still have someone who's available during those business hours who can notarize certifications.
Yes, that's correct.
Perfect.
Yeah, they just need to contact me. All my information's on there. They can call me, email me, whatever. And we'll just make it all, make it all work.
Well then, anyone else have any other comment?
I never doubted you, Karen.
Thanks, Teresa.
Alright, item four A then, Dr. Moser, visitor participation.
Upon your approval, I think you can open it up for, for individuals who would like to comment.
Okay. Visitor participation. Visitors may speak on any non-agenda item at this time. State law and/or board policy may limit the school board's response. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And keep in mind, if you say something similar to what someone else does, try to edit if you can. But I'll give everyone a moment. Usually takes a little bit to line everyone up. If anyone wants to participate or ask any questions. I don't see anyone. It's a slow day. I think we want to get to Thanksgiving.
No, they want to go and celebrate my birthday.
Where?
Your homes.
Next meeting.
Your party.
It was a party.
And since it doesn't appear that we have.
I do have one small thing I wanted to say as people are here. This is really quick. I know most of the people that are, are listening are not familiar with committees that we just started going into committees. But the, this is where you really want to go in. You can express your, your opinions and express what you want, depending on what committee it is. And this is where the working groups are. So I would really stress that even though Building and Grounds is the best committee, go to all the committee meetings that you are really interested in. Policy, curriculum, communication. I think there's a couple of other ones. But that is where you can truly form the policies or the things that are coming to the board. So please come into those, those meetings and those are posted.
And also next week we'll have at least one committee meeting because that'll be, or actually take it back. Not committee meeting, it'll be a special board meeting because it's going to relate to further work on the superintendent search. I don't know if we have any other committee meetings offhand next week. Alright, we have a couple of hands up. Rob Cromwell?
Sure. Rob Cromwell, 7530 North Applewood Lane. So with the, the committee meetings, is there something on the agenda for public comment? Or is it part of the policy that people can just speak on any agenda item? Or how, how does that work exactly?
Rob, I mean, if I can, Dr. Moser, our policies state that we can ask for input from the community and we'll try to treat those committees the same way that we always have, same way that we normally do it. You know, in public, if we had an in-person meeting. But our, our practice has been to have, in addition to our regular involvement, visitor participation at the end of the meeting. So I, I think that there will be time for the public to be able to comment on what's for the committee. And also what may be a non-agenda item before the committee.
Or if you have a, a particular thing you want to talk about, you can like just write a little note to the chair. So you can speak on that, that particular issue.
Okay. Eric and Tracy Stettler. Wait, Rob, did I cut you off before you do? Rob, I didn't cut you off, did I?
No.
Okay, good. Just making sure. Eric and Tracy Stettler.
Just a happy birthday, Tamika. I'm sorry I missed the buildings, buildings meeting yesterday. I didn't know what was going on, which is why I, I am speaking this evening. I'm, I am wondering where I can find the information to the committees and I need to know when they are in order to go. And I, and I, I feel like I have to go onto Board Docs like every other day to find out what's new we published or what's coming out next. And I'm hoping that the, that we maybe might consider having that as like the front of our website. Here's the committees. Here's who your contact is. This is when the meetings are so that it's easier for someone like me who is not quite sure where I fit in, but I really want to fit in. And so I'm trying to find out if maybe I should be part of the foundation or the PTO or all of the above.
Building in.
All the above, but okay.
Are the building, see? And so I need a list of the committees, who the chairs are, when they meet. Especially if there's public comment available. I need this to be readily accessible at the click of a button, not buried deep and not having to be researched on Board Docs all the time. I'm, I'm going there every other day to make sure that I know when to show up. Also, happy birthday, Tamika.
And I, I just want to point out, I think that, and I'm going to the homepage right now. And just a quick glance, I know that our special board meetings, our regular board meetings, and I'm pretty sure committees have also been showing up populated just at the main page on the calendar. You know, it's something that we're, we need to address whether or not we're going to have a permanent schedule for when these meetings are going to take place. But we are posting them when they are scheduled. So that's a start. I hope that that's something that helps you out a little bit. But if you go right now, when they're currently scheduled, with the exception of the Monday one that we just tentatively arranged, hasn't been noticed yet. But they will be on the homepage. And I think that they're also being emailed once those agendas are ready. And Karen can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that they're being emailed to everyone in the district mailing list.
And also, we're just trying to work out these committees right now. We haven't, this is our first month of having committee meetings. And I think we're just trying to figure out what is the best time. So just give us a little bit of patience, Tracy. Just find, trying to figure out what's the best time to have, you know, a steady meeting, whether it's the second Thursday of the month or the first Thursday. But a lot of stuff has been thrown and we've had to have emergency meetings as well, so.
All day, every day. You guys are doing a phenomenal job. So you have all the patients in the world. That's why I want to be a part of it.
That's really, it's wonderful to hear. And thank you very much. I mean, it's a team effort and we've got, you know, some great leadership at the top and, and really great administration and board right now.
Dr. Moser had something he needed to say.
Thank you. Tracy, I will send you that information you've requested, the names of the committees, the, the chairs, the members of the committees. That's not a problem at all. I'm happy to send that through.
Terrific.
And Tracy, that's why we're looking at the website because I agree with you. That information is not, it's not easy to find. That's
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Moser. I appreciate it very much. Thank you so much. I, I really want to become very actively involved. I just am trying to find where I am the most good. And I think I represent a, probably a pretty large amount of parents that really just want to help wherever we can. So thank you very much.
Excuse me, this is Karen. I'm going to speak up for a minute here. Everything is on the website. If you want to find who is on the committee meetings, when they are being hosted, as soon as I hear about them, they're always posted on the calendar. And the list of every single committee member is on the website. Across the header, it says School Board. All you have to do is click on it. It's right there. So just wanted to make
It is there. I think I was looking, if you look on your phone, sometimes it can be harder to but all the, the, and, and as Tamika said, a lot of it is that our dates are not firmed up. We're kind of, everything's a little ad hoc right now. So that's, that's true. I was not trying to slight
Oh, that might be very much what it is too, because I'm all, it's on my, I stalk all five of my kids on my phone for school every day. So everything is on my phone.
We, yeah. Thank you very much. Yeah, Ms. Lucas, are you still lined up there or did you drop? Is Sean or Shayna Lucas?
It's okay. She got so excited about B and G Committee that she just fainted. Yeah.
Alright, well, um, I'll, I'll give her a moment. And in the meantime, I'll just you know, remind everyone, we'll have a, a special meeting next week and look out for that agenda to go further with respect to our search of a, a search firm. I guess I just want to say, look, next week, and despite the fact we'll have the meeting next week, I want to say now, next week is Thanksgiving. It's been a tough 2020. A lot of us are going to be socially distant, near family. But from the bottom of my heart, I want you guys to have a Thanksgiving. It's been a tough year. Hopefully we still have a lot to be thankful for. Just wear a mask, wash your hands, be socially distant. And other than that, have a really healthy and happy Thanksgiving if we don't see you next week. And my effort to fill space has not resulted in any new hands. So I am going to entertain a motion humbly to adjourn. Tamika? No? Okay, Tamika, are you going to second?
Nope, I love this meeting.
Alright, all in favor? Danielle?
Hi.
Tamika?
No.
Teresa? Molly?
Hi.
And Andrew votes aye. The motion is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. And happy birthday, Tamika.
Thank you. Building some grounds.
Bye-bye.